Head of the table, that's perfect. So, just to bring everybody up to speed really quickly. Our old HRAC, our Human Relations Advisory Committee. Sorry, I'm a teacher, I'm used to people talking in the back of the room. Yeah, that's right. We decided as a board, oh gosh, eight months ago or so, last summer, that we wanted to replace our old HRAC with a new HRAC, which is Human Resources Advisory Committee. So that's definitely a change in focus and purpose of the advisory committee. So we have closed the old HRAC. Thank you to Mr. McElveen for helping with that this year. We thank them for their years of service. And we are, I hope, we're on track, I believe, to begin the work of the new Human Resources Advisory Committee as of September. But we are now just kind of creating it. So, in the interest of time, we are not, I sent an email to board members last night, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. I was hopeful that we'd be able to spend some time today talking about the charge, the first charge for the new HRAC. But we will not have time for that tonight. But we will, as a board, be voting on the bylaws for the new HRAC, Ms. Evans, I believe, at our March 23 meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's important that we have a little time, March 23rd, yes. It's important that we had to take a little time today, right now, to take a look at the bylaws, we'll be voting on them. Really hope that we can get as many questions asked and answered right now as possible. And if between now and March 23rd you have any other questions or concerns, I strongly encourage you to give me a call. And we'll try to work out, work through anything, you know, before we sit down at the table on the 23rd, that would be great. So, I want to ask, Chase, if you don't mind, to just start us off. Chase basically took the boilerplate that we have for advisory committee bylaws, and basically took the old HRAC bylaws. We sat down, looked at them, and then just updated them, made some changes to make them reflect the new purpose, the human resources purpose here. So Chase, if there's anything you want to add before we take questions?
Good afternoon, that's correct. We didn't do a lot of editorializing on the old bylaws. Simply took the old HRAC, broadened them from relations to resources, took out a couple of sections that spoke really to that, and put in broader language at the top that spoke more to that human resources piece, and then put a blank in there for the number of participants on the advisory committee. It was 36, I believe, on the old HRAC. And that's a pretty large number. I would recommend that the board look somewhere in the 18 to 24, and perhaps have it flexible based on the charge for any given year. And I can provide some more background on why I think that way as we move forward. But that is really probably the one change, is we did take out that concrete number that was in there before.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things to get us started. So we do want to try to fill in that blank on the number, and we can have some discussion about that. I also have already had a couple of questions from Mr. Moon, which I appreciate. One is the role of staff in this advisory committee. And Dr. Ramey, if you want to weigh in on this, I assume that it would mirror the role that staff plays in all of our advisory committees. Is that your understanding?
Yes, it would be a similar role to 20 other committees.
So basically, helping committee members with information that they need, not a voting role?
Correct.
Right, so, like all of our, this is my assumption, this is a brand-new advisory committee, so if anybody wants to do this a different way, let me know. I'm just assuming that this is what we want to do. That would be, there would be school board member appointees, they would be the voting members, and then we would have certain members of staff on the committee as support for the committee.
That's right, and the old HRAC met in one of the HR conference rooms on Wednesday nights, once a month, and staff was there to help support and facilitate the meetings. And while the topic might be slightly different, the role of staff would, I see the role of staff staying similar, the same, as it's been in the past.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question Mr. Moon had, and I appreciate this. On page 1, Article 3, Tasks, if you take a look at that, A and B, so we have A, B, and C. We only, we have to get to C before we see the annual charge mentioned. And I think Mr. Moon's concern, and he could speak for himself if he wants, but I understand his concern. I think that A and B might suggest that the advisory committee can go off and do other work beyond the charge if they feel like A and B applies, you know, that they could find other work. And it's my sense that actually, we do want our advisory committees to stick to the annual charge. So there may be that we could add a clause in A and B, something to the effect of "as assigned in the annual FCSB charge", or something like that, just so they know they're not allowed to go off into the Wild West. That's just a thought, okay. Other question, yes, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. How would we envision this as being different from STACK? And obviously, this committee reports, we will do a charge. It advises the school board, STACK is relationship between the superintendent and all the various employee groups. But I guess in terms of the concerns or the ongoing conversation, what would you see as the same, different, what have you?
Well, hopefully it won't be 200, like STACK is, off the top. But I think it's Pat, as Pat was saying, we'd really want to develop the committee around an annual charge. And so the work would be curtailed to that specific item. I know we're not talking about the charge today, but, you know, whatever that would be, then the meetings would just, it would be an overall focus on that for the year. It wouldn't be an opportunity for employee groups or for employees to bring general concerns. I think we have a number of different avenues for that. So this would really be about advising the board on one specific area the board has of interest in over the course of a year.
And so, do you feel that this, along with all the other, because there are other avenues for different employee groups and representative groups to either come to the board or to obviously work with your office, to work with the superintendent? So, this newly constituted committee then sort of rounds out the kind of information that we would need to make sure that we're addressing workforce needs?
I think so. I think that there is a place for this committee in the work that we're doing. There's a lot of misinformation sometimes on the workings behind HR because of the sensitivity of some of the materials or how it rolls out. And so, as long as the charge is tailored appropriately, I think this does provide an opportunity for our employees or others to be involved in certain processes or aspects that influence the work that the board does, and in turn, the division that they might not otherwise be involved in. And so I think there is some work that we could do in a very positive way in connecting and communicating with our employees as well as the broader community through this advisory committee.
One more question, and as I'm trying to consider who I might appoint to this. Would we be envisioning people who may be in the HR field in private business as another resource? Or would we envision all of these people to be our own employees? Or some combination of two?
Probably the last option, a combination of the two. I think it would be great to have the voice of our employees included, but I think that also it does us well when we have individuals from our community that have that background.
So you would see that as, okay, so you would see that as a plus? Because there are some, obviously, who are in positions like yours, but in private business.
Right, and, you know, one of the challenges sometimes is that our community folks bring a lot of great knowledge, but they provide it from the private sector.
Right, that's the downside.
And so they run into frustrations, they can't understand why we have to do some of the things we do. But it's also a nice bridge to have those conversations and understand how we all operate in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McGlocklin?
So I appreciate what's been brought to us today in looking at it. I would support the feedback that Mr. Moon's provided, that you kind of want to elevate that the primary focus is to advise on the annual charge that the board has tasked them with. But I do think that having the other contextual points listed below still have value, especially since it's new and people are wanting to wrap their minds around what exactly is the role and purpose and effect of this committee. I will say, from hearing from my appointee to the Student Health Advisory Committee, that this is a really important one to have in its own right. So, because at the Shack meetings, there's been conversations at times of, "Well, we're talking about student and employee health." Well, the work of Shack, just on talking about the whole child and the whole student and the mental health and well-being, that alone is a big task at hand. So, if we have the HR ASC committee, then those issues as well about employee mental health and well-being can take place in that environment. And then you don't necessarily have a committee that's trying to serve two very significant, important purposes. But there's just not enough hours in a meeting and enough meetings in a year to really do good work to it. And I do also support that we look at a combination of bringing people who might have subject matter expertise in HR issues. Ideally, I think each of us as board members should be looking for appointees who say, "We understand how important it is to continue to attract the best people who want to serve in FCPS and want to best understand what are the strengths of working in FCPS, and then maybe some of the things that they can be able to bring voice and concern to the table." So, overall, I found it interesting that the size of the committee right now sort of looks like it's, you know, the 12 board member appointees, and then just the other employee associations. And given, I was one of the board members who worked on governance, where we looked at our advisory committees, and we looked at the membership levels, and the feedback I've gotten from my appointees is, the larger you make the group, yes, it's nice, it's inclusive, but then you can have 25 or 30 people sitting around the table saying, "Why am I going to this meeting? I can't really contribute anything." So, I would just say to everybody, I think if the more, you know, intimate you can make it, so it's substantive membership, not volume of membership, will better serve this committee.
Dahlia?
And, thank you. I also will echo some of the thoughts of, it's a new committee, and I guess I was hoping, as we start to create new committees, that we look at minimal or recommended background or expertise. So I understand that that might be of an informal conversation. And I know we're not discussing the charge, but if one of the charges for this committee would be to take a look at our calendar, I would want a representative from FCCPTA and from the interfaith community involved in this. If that's not the case, I'd be happy to have that conversation. But I do hope we can look at that going home forward. And if we're not going to formalize any minimum or recommended requirements, perhaps there's another way, as it's being formed, that the communication incorporate what we are looking for, to have that kind of wide picture and different perspectives in there. Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth, followed by Tom?
I'm on the side of a smaller group is frankly more effective. I mean, just imagine, you know, our board, sometimes we know 12 people is a lot. If a committee is bigger than this, it's even harder. So, a limited group. Are you soliciting, Ms. Hines, a number for board members? To, are we, are we going to have like a liaison to this, like we have for others? How is this going to work?
Well, just looking at the way the bylaws set it up, it looks like the bylaws now contemplate 12 school board appointees, another four, I would say, one from each of our employee associations, and a retired, is that what we were?
Based on the workings of the other advisory committees, yes, I think the minimum is 12, that every board member has the ability to appoint someone to that. Beyond 12, it would really be up to the pleasure of the board of what they wanted that number to be.
But I do see in under-membership, Article 4, Membership, it does, we do seem to be contemplating a few extra people in addition to board appointees.
I guess, really, the question is that the employee associations already have, like, closed-door meetings with the superintendent through the H blah, 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 whatever that number is. We know what I'm talking about. And so I'm wondering, is this the appropriate place to layer on employee associations who have a seat at the table effectively in closed-door session with the superintendent? And they're able to basically really leverage issues directly? And could this not just be, you know, a composition of 12? But then the other question was, is there going to be a liaison from the board to this, to this committee, just like the others? Yes, okay, so?
And actually, right now, Ms. Hines is the liaison to the board.
But, I mean, it's going to continue.
To the new HRAC.
It's going to continue for just the same, like, okay. So, I guess I'm on the less is more, at least from the beginning. And then if we find that, for whatever reasons, we need to expand it, it doesn't mean that they can't be in the room, that they couldn't participate, be invited to participate, like we asked staff to come to the table and contribute, that they certainly couldn't do that. And that's my initial thought.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Huff?
Thank you, just to quickly follow up on that question about the liaison. Is that picked up here in the bylaws, or is, I didn't?
No, I don't think so. I don't think that's in our bylaws. That's just our practice as a board, that we appoint liaisons.
It's in the governance.
I assume this will become one of the advisory committees.
In the governance, my provides for that, great.
It talks about, it references liaison in the meetings. Consultation with the Assistant Superintendent for HR and with notification to the School Board Liaison. So it's not lined out or defined, but it is referenced there. And I think it's also referenced in, I had it pulled up a second ago, in Policy 1710, which is the policy that governs the, these committees. But I'd have to go back.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were tying up that loose end. So, I think this ties into Mr. Moon's points in Article 3 with the tasks. I agree also that maybe in terms of priority of A, B, C, D, E, the charge should be put in primacy. And I wonder whether or not A and B, are we really talking about those things with the caveat that's included in E as related to the charge? Or were you thinking of that it wouldn't necessarily be related to the charge?
No, I was thinking, yes, and my thinking they're related to the charge. But the other piece that was going on with revises is we tried to stay as close to the former bylaws that were in place for the Human Relations Advisory Committee. And so we didn't do a lot of reordering or pulling things out. We did make some revisions, but I didn't start from a blank slate, I guess is how I'd phrase it.
Maybe this will help. Is it, can you just elaborate a little bit on what A means? Like, what would that be?
Well, again, I think it would go back to the charge. I mean, I think it would be, it would be, we wouldn't want the committee just to come in here in their annual report and start talking about all the different elements of human resources and how they relate. And so I think it would be related to, Dahlia mentioned the calendar, about what the objectives of the calendar are and how those relate to a premier workforce with inside FCPS, and how they benefit the school system would be one example of how I would see that relating by use of the objectives and implementations.
So, okay, let me get, so what is it that we're talking about when we say FCPS Human Resources Programs? And what do we mean when we say the role of such programs? What is that?
Programs would be any tasks, any?
That benefits?
Yeah, sorry, yes, sorry. Right, any of the different functions, any of the different functions from HR.
Okay. And then, so similarly, sort of in B, when it says advising the board on resources needed to sustain an effective HR program through the school community. So that sort of then is picking up on A and saying, okay. And then, and, to maintain this sorts of benefit package, we're going to need these resources.
Sure, Megan mentioned the connection to STACK and employee wellness. And so if the charge was about expanding the employee wellness program one year, it would be okay, first A would be about this program, then B would be to do this, here are the resources we would need to commit or would be required for us to sustain such a program.
And I'm not sure that, I'm sorry, not sure that today we can go much farther down, sort of trying to dig into these tasks a little bit, but it might be in terms of these bylaws to sort of try to generate, sort of, what are, you know, sort of refining these concepts in the specific task. And obviously, the charge we give, that should be primary, and I think that's, but I think that maybe if we could figure out some way, maybe just, maybe this language works. But when I read it, I was sort of scratching my head a little bit.
And I guess we'll do it at the end, but what I'm hearing is one of the takeaways, our next step is going to be to potentially reorder those?
I suppose so. I mean, I think the point that I'm hearing is that the charge really needs to direct what this committee does, right? So maybe we put C as A, and then, although I kind of?
And you could make A and B almost subbullets. Of C, if you did that, to make sure they flow directly from there, change the wording a little bit, and so that those two pieces directly play out underneath the charge, and so it provides those parameters that the board might be looking for in terms of what the committee does each year.
Sure, but I do, I also hear Ms. McGlocklin, I think, said, "We do want to have something in here that explains, this is HR", you know, "So, we don't want anybody to be confused about that this is basically the universe within which the committee will operate."
Yeah, that's why I was sort of trying to pull out, to draw out some examples, so that everybody hears, is, you know, and listening, because I've already had questions on this particular committee, sort of, what is this going to be about? How does it relate to the old committee? And already asking, can they participate on it? And so, it's important, you know, so there are people in the community who are paying attention to this, and it would be good to, as much as we can, refine it before we begin, so.
Right, well, and until we have a charge, you know, when we have a charge, I think it will be a little bit more clear, because HR is enormous. I mean, there are lots and lots of things that the committee could work on. And we want the bylaws to enable all of that, because year to year we'll have different ideas, right?
Perfect transition to my next point. So, in Article 10, it talks about the adoption and amendment of the bylaws. And it talks about the bylaws being amendable by either HRAC or the board. Can you talk about how we?
I think that we lifted that language directly out of Policy 1710. That's boilerplate language. That's not language that I simply came up with.
I mean, that does raise a red flag for me, that the, you know, six months in, the new HRAC could decide that they want to make wholesale amendments to their own bylaws, and they would be empowered to do that. I think, I would like that to come back to the, to the school board in the form of some sort of presentation to us as to why they might want to amend it.
Besides?
Yes.
I think, you know, changes probably that's a subject to subparagraph C.
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, I think only the school board can actually adopt these bylaws. So I think also the only the school board can adopt changes to the bylaws. So I think you're, I think you're right. I'm surprised that this was in our old boilerplate.
I know.
I think we should change it as well. So, just say, you know, recommend it to the school board and adopt it by the school board.
Yeah, and I just didn't know whether or not, in our experience, that's worked well to have the modifications going through the?
No, I don't think we do that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I have, thank you, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Huff, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then I'll go back.
Thank you. When are we expecting it to come back to us to discuss the charge?
Well, it's a good question, and I have to turn to the chair.
So, we were going to discuss it today, but, you know, we're running out of time. We've only got another hour before we need to leave. So, we would need to bring that back at another work session. And right now, our April, May, and June work sessions are pretty chock full. I would anticipate maybe June. This, the work of, I know, but we're using all of our holds, you know. We've jettisoned things from April to June. So, I can try to schedule it for June so that they can get up and running in July, which is when they would typically get working for a new year. So, I would anticipate June would probably be the earliest.
So I guess I have a question then for maybe Ms. Palchek or for the board. I know that after our last forum, one of the things you were doing was working on, looking at what it would be for the calendar to be the charge of this committee. Although I am a huge proponent of a committee to discuss the calendar, and I really want to see that happen, I don't believe I'd like to see it here. And I'm concerned that if we wait till June and we come up with the charge, if by chance it does not end up through this committee, I think we're running out of time to have this committee in time for a calendar creation. So, I'm a little concerned that they're so intertwined, and I'm not quite sure what the next best step is.
I don't think, we haven't decided that the calendar would be what we're asking them to do. And of course, if that were their charge, we finish the calendar in December typically.
Right.
So, they would need other things that they were doing.
Right.
And if I could speak to that, and Dr. Ramey can chime in on the timing and the concern around that, my understanding is that if, even if this were not decided as the charge of the committee, that the idea for the calendar committee is because generally the process is September through December or August through December, that there is time to create that committee. They wouldn't be starting this month or next month. But that would be a fall committee.
Luckily or unluckily, depending on what seat you're sitting in, you get to do both of these things. And so, the calendar is well on my radar as well. And so if it would not, as Dahlia said, if it would not be the charge, we would look at, probably look, we wouldn't yet be starting to recruit people for that committee right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, under Membership? So it's vague on, and I know that you're looking for guidance for us on the minimum number, the maximum number, but it says Employee Organizations Associations, including Retired. If we're going to keep that clause, I heard Ms. Schultz's concern. So I'm going to put in, if it is going to stay there, it leaves it open to it being multiple, two, three, four per? I would at least want it to say only one per?
Right, I agree with you. And actually, I can understand how that clause is open to different, or that whole subparagraph is open to a different interpretation. And my interpretation provides the board with the ultimate authority to select one, five, 10, even zero representatives from any of the associations to serve on this committee. That subphrase does not dictate that there has to be members of any employee group beyond the 12 appointees from the board on the HRAC, because it says in that last clause that these individuals will subsequently serve upon approval of the school board. It only invites them to submit application.
But who's looking at those applications?
The board would decide, along with their other appointments, if they wanted additional individuals to serve on the HRAC.
So then we would make that decision that, yes, we do, let's just say. And then who would look at those applications before it got submitted to the board for approval?
That would be probably the school board liaison. So, because I think what happens if I'm correct, we do our appointments to advisory committees in July over the summer, right?
We approve them typically in July. So they're put on the, they're put on the agenda.
Consent, right, is usually how?
Typically, yeah, in fact, it's always consent. And then, also, the liaisons are chosen in July.
Right, and I guess the clerk's office actually does that work of collecting the names and putting them on the committee.
Right.
Right? So, it's a good question. If we have people on an advisory committee who are not directly named by individual school board members, how mechanically do we do that? Do we have another advisory committee where we have people beyond who we appoint?
We do, yeah. I mean, Shack, for example, has different organizations that contribute, send members, yeah, actually, we have quite a few.
Okay, and so they then, I'm just understanding mechanically how that happens, like with Shack?
I think staff does it for some of them, don't they? Yeah, see, I just feel like this is very vague. I'm just concerned that we're leaving ourselves open to a lot of questions, and then down the road saying, "Oh, how did that end up happening?" So that's my only point in asking these questions. I would prefer some more clarification there.
I would prefer some more clarification there.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Sure, I just wanted to provide a little bit of input on the suggestions that have been on membership that was presented as well as on the charge. Regarding membership, I do think that it's important not only for each of the school board members to be able to present, to recommend someone for this committee, but I think the employee organizations need to be on this committee, because even though they do have a seat at the table in the one-on-one meetings with the superintendent and the chair and vice chair of the school board, this would be something that I would hope would tackle more strategic issues on an ongoing basis, and so their input would be greatly received or would be invaluable. The second thing is regarding the calendar, because of us not quite knowing who is going to be on this committee, I would actually love to see, and I thought what Ms. Palczek had originally recommended, is having an ad hoc committee on the calendar, or a group that would work on the calendar on an ongoing basis. And I think that is a charge unto itself and not necessarily an HR charge, because I would like to see greater representation from the, not only the staff, but parent communities and other, like the business community and others.
Again, we're not, probably not going to settle the charge. I would say, though, that if you want other people, I think if the advisory committee wanted other people in the room, of course, they could always invite, say, okay, for this part of the conversation, we're going to bring in the faith community or the business community or whatever. So my only point is that I don't think those people need to be on the committee in order to be in the room and be helpful to the conversation, but...
And I believe HRAC decided to, you know, perhaps after the first year, to say, let's create a task force, or let's create a subcommittee. So you also don't have 100 people making those decisions, but you have representatives who can get input and, you know, have voices in the room, that that would be possible. But that regardless, HR will be working with the calendar committee, whether through HRAC or through a task force. So it just seems for me originally like the most logical place, but I know, unfortunately, we're not having the full conversation today.
Right, and I'm sorry, I want to, I have people waiting as well. Is there something else?
I just think that that's something that, as far as, I would like to decouple the two from a discussion of a calendar committee versus the HRAC, because there are many other issues that a human resources committee should be tackling, including beyond calendars, compensation, pension funds, things like that.
I think it's fair to say we'll make no decisions about a charge today, so. Mr. Moon?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, actually amendments of the bylaws, and I hope that they can be, any amendment to the bylaws should be approved by the board. At the same time, if the board on its own wants to amend the bylaws, I believe should be able to amend the bylaws as well, even without the advisory committee's consent. I think the board should be the governing body and should make, should be able to make ultimate decision. On the membership, I know that we have other advisory committees with a larger size of a membership. I would prefer, at least for the voting members, to be board member appointees, board member appointees, and we can, as our appointees, can appoint anyone of our choice. It could be just a community member, it could be a parent, it could be a teacher, it could be an administrator, but, and also advisory committee could invite other organizations to participate in providing some input and feedback on things they work on. But as to the, you know, voting membership, I would prefer to see it to be done by board member appointees.
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of go-bags, and then I think in the interest of time, we should try to pin down as much as possible what this will look like, because we do want to vote on it on the 23rd. I have Ms. Strauss followed by Mrs. Schultz.
The only thing that I wanted to say is, on the tasks, I do agree that reordering A, B, C, D, E, F, making sure that the charge is, the first is A, and then, like Dr. Ramey's suggestions of putting the other two underneath that. So I think that would be an excellent change. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Schultz?
I just, I have a question for my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders. You know, in the advocacy that we have the employee organizations at the table, again, I appreciate that, but what do you do about all the employees? You know, we have way many more teachers who are not in an organization, then what do you do about them? And so that's part of the, you know, the balance of, you know, if they're, if they plan to cycle in for matters, and this says nothing, you know, about the value of the employee organizations, it's just a question of, you know, where is, where does the weight in the organization come? And I thank Mr. Moon for coming up with the idea that the voting members should be the employee, I mean, the board appointees. So I do support that as an option, but I still wonder if there isn't a way to balance the work of a committee that doesn't kind of get, you know, doesn't go down the road of being, you know, a replica of something that we already have? And if it's not just a good idea to have arms length on this one, so.
I would err on the side...
Ms. Corbett, sorry.
I'm sorry. I would err on the side of inclusion, and I would err on the side of, really, as we structure the charge for this group, that we charge them with real and meaningful projects to look at or tasks to look at that are broader than a one-off meeting.
But your advocacy then doesn't represent all the rest of the educators who are not in an organization. So what do we do about that voice?
That's the voice that it's in, I would say, all of us at the table. If we have representatives in our community or constituents that feel that they don't have a voice at the table and want to have a voice at the table, I would encourage them, as I do with any of my appointments, to volunteer their time and be appointed to the committee.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I think what I'd like to do, make sure that we're capturing people's concerns. I'm going to come back to membership, because I think we need a minute probably to settle on something there. But what I have heard, and Mr. Ramey, I know you're keeping track too, Dr. Ramey, sorry, Article 3 tasks, we know that we need to rework that a little bit, and I think you had a good idea about that. Thank you, wonderful. And then also amendments, which is Article 10. We want to make sure, I agree with Mr. Moon, as long as everybody's okay with this, that the, these bylaws can be amended by the school board only, and recommended amendments can come from the advisory committee to the school board. Does that sound right? Okay, so we probably need to change that. Am I missing? Okay, so really, just now, the number and membership, I think, is what we want to make sure that we pin down, right? And so this is what I've heard, a few different things. We know we definitely want 12 appointed members, right? The question from the school board. And then the question is, since we do list in the bylaws there, employee associations, including retired employees, and I think it would be nice for them to have a spot somewhere on an advisory group, I don't think they have one right now, really, our retired employees, or do we? Do they?
I meet with the retirees.
Oh, you do?
Quarterly, actually, more frequently than that.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm not, I was not aware of that. Okay. So how do people feel about if we put a range there? Committee shall be composed of up to, what do we think, 16, 18 members? 18? All right, let's say 18. We're pulling a number out of our hats.
It's somewhat.
Well, yeah, let's see what we mean, but let's put 18, and then that would be 12, so school board appointees, and then that leaves six. And I guess the idea is then that the employee associations, as this is written in here, can recommend people, and they could recommend up to six. I don't know. Let's just go ahead and throw that out there. Let me, give me your thoughts.
I have to get...
But, go ahead.
So you're recommending that the employee organizations represent half again as much as of the board itself?
What would you recommend?
Well, there's three employee organizations, correct?
No, we have about a dozen, almost, because we have, we have three teacher organizations and three principal associations, then about a half dozen support employee organizations as well.
And we can still limit who votes. I mean, we could still say that only school board appointees vote. That's up to us.
So, okay, so you're saying six, I'm saying three, and then I guess we would pick from the, I still don't, somebody else asked the question, how do the people get picked who get added on to the committee?
Okay, maybe, can someone answer that question of how that works with Shack? Ms. Moberg, I don't know the mechanics of it. When we have other advisory committees whose members are not named by the, by board members, how does that work? Do you know? They're named by the department. Appointed by the department, okay.
They go through the staff liaison.
Okay.
So basically, those other committees are grown, but with additions by staff and appointed by staff. And so if we're throwing stuff out there, then I'm going to say, I wouldn't add more than 25% to the representation of the board. I wouldn't add 50% of the representation of the board, and that I guess we'd have to come up with some kind of an application process and a selection process to determine at a later date. But I would say it's three, and maybe it's, you know, it rotates, and it's one from the employees' organization, one from, you know, the combination of the, you know, principals and support, and one from retired. And then it rotates. I don't know, but I think three sounds like it's 25% of, you know, addition to 12, and 15 becomes, you know, not too big, not too manageable. 18, you're really getting up there.
Ms. McLaughlin?
In the interest of time, I would just offer a compromise, which is, the language says up to six members. So, and if it's the board in the end is going to make the final determination, which, just as a side note to everybody, I didn't know our staff liaisons are the ones who decide any non-school board appointed members. And I'll be honest with all of you, these are our advisory committees. Staff operates the school system, and they have all the input that they want to seek and deserve. This was, you know, school board advisory committees are to get community stakeholders in to give us their perspective as well. So I think if we just say composed to, composed of up to 18, then again, we could end up saying, we're not going to have it larger than 15, like Ms. Schultz is saying. But rather than us debate three additional members, six additional members, let's just say, you know, no more than 18, and upon board approval. And I think we should be approving anyone else besides our appointees, so that we can, you know, have that voice.
Thank you. I mean, I think we do, you know, the school board does appoint, you know, finally, formally, everyone who's on the committee. So we have that oversight. The question you're asking though is, do we even know how they come to us? And I didn't know that.
Yes, exactly.
So it's important that we know. So I, with Mrs. McLaughlin's suggestion, we're going back to up to 18. And again, that's just the ceiling. We can work on the details later. If there's no other comment, in the interest of time, can I see a show of hands? Are people comfortable with up to 18 at this point for the bylaws? And we'll work on the details of how we pick them later. Okay, all right, so we can put up to 18? All right, I think those are, I think that reflects everyone's comments. Thank you very much, Dr. Ramey. We'll send out revised.
Just, Madam, Madam, besides, I think, you know, for me, at this point in time, you know, whether it's a voting membership versus non-voting, maybe critical, if it is 18, again, I think this is something pointed out by some of my colleagues, that school board represents the entire county, entire county, and, you know, having up to 60%, 50% of that to be somewhat outside of the school board, there will be appointee, having said...
I don't believe the prior committee, and I'm not sure about Shack, there's made a distinction about once appointed, if you were a board member appointee, or, well, they're all board appointees in general, if some could vote and some couldn't, we could definitely make that distinction.
What's your suggestion? Mr. Moon, would you like us to?
You know, my suggestion is, you know, board member recommended appointees, voting members, to be, you know, voting members should be limited to those who are board member appointees.
Okay, let's go ahead and, yeah, okay, let's have a show of hands. Would people like the bylaws to limit voting membership on this committee to those 12 members of the committee who are directly appointed by the, by school board members? Okay, looks like a winner. Listen, speak now. Are we done? All right, thank you all very much, and thank you, Chase.
So I think we have a, probably a two-minute break here now. Meeting managers, is that correct? Okay, I'm sending everybody an email. I'd like everybody to take a look at it, because we have something that we have to alert our clerk to before 6 o'clock.